So we got a few minutes. Does officially start till four fifteen?
Well, I got an email last week from Amy asking if we wanted to do Monday or Tuesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday or something. And I chose Wednesday and I didn't hear nothing. And then I watched city council and I heard you say, Mike, that it was gonna be on Wednesday. And then Wednesday evening, I got the email from Jackie and it's for today. It's like, okay.
Hey, I asked for an excused absence for yesterday. I thought it was yesterday.
Yeah.
And I know Amy said she was gonna. Think that she was dealing with lands or something for wrestling, so.
She's a busy one.
Yeah, she really is.
Do you know when the next audit is gonna be?
You know, I it's supposed to actually be. I think in April, but you know, let me check on that because honestly, I don't I don't think you'd answer that. I don't know for sure.
How can the group that does the selecting, like people wanting to be on board? How can that be a speedier process than what it is?
Yeah, that's been a topic of.
Has Derek talked to you?
Who? Derek? No, he hasn't. No.
Well, we had our planning commission meeting and he brought up that the advisory board for the. What was it? The climate policy?
Yeah, I know that's been a challenge.
And we don't get going, we may lose that thing.
Well, and I need to talk to him because one of my understanding was. And I don't I I don't know if he knows is that that staff like myself, I can be a member of that that climate board if needed.
Because he asked that the planning commission wanted to, you know, take their hat off and then be on on this. But he was saying that he's it's taking for air. I mean, this should have been done even when Trevor was here.
Yeah, let me ask him. So I'm gonna make a comment.
Because it was kind of frustrating to hear.
Are you on that committee, Mike?
Well, I'm on the planning. This just got proposed to us.
So you wanna be on the climate?
I've gotta look at some more and see. I just got an email from him. And on the. All the stuff that's there, so. But he told us that look into it and then. Let him know, but it's just frustrating to hear that. It takes forever to have this.
I know some of the board appointments, like the planning commission, the council wanted to get, I think it was. I don't know what committee it was, but. The mayor. Were you on were you on the selection committee that was that that interviewed people?
No.
Can't remember who it was now. It was mayor, I think deputy mayor and Julia Hart. So that.
Which is fine.
More people on the. Yeah.
But it's we're talking, you know, people, you know, in this. That group. I mean, it just seems like, which is fine, the process, but you hand in everything. And then two months later, you're maybe getting a phone.
That kind of happened with Tom Dolan and and he.
Yeah, that was quite a mess. I remember Brittany Moore.
Yeah.
I just don't know.
Put in their applications.
Yeah, that that was the thing for planning commission, right?
Yeah, but we're just talking about this new thing that they have to have so many people on the board.
Yeah, and I think. I think part of it HLA was handling at first and then Derek came on board and there was some some time in the middle. Hey, welcome.
Of course, right?
Yeah, come on in, come on in. Yeah, you're here. Yeah, absolutely.
This just seems like. It's always, I haven't had, you know, when we're well. The mayor's gonna do.
Oh, I'm a senior too. My name's Lila. I'm a senior at St. Simon's.
We got.
Yeah, senior. I was a senior in nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah, no, I it's.
It's been a really fun year so far.
Definitely, yeah, definitely. Um, I'll have to check on why this is going to that committee. Hasn't been expedited. But yeah, I agree. Like in general, we can speed up the process. I'll I'll say like sometimes it is like hurting cats to good. Because what here we like to take things through subcommittees.
Right.
And then up through up to the the actual council. So I'll say the the largest challenge is always getting everybody in the same room to say, well, you know, what's your schedule? So I can say with planning commission, that was frustrating in the sense like the mayor was gone, you know, to get everybody vetted first. To get through the applications and then.
When he's gone, there should be somebody else because I mean, business still continues.
Oh, I I agree. You know, with this climate act, honestly, I I don't know. I'll have to investigate that and see. What's going on? Because you know, I I didn't even back on the stuff to Derek.
Well, yeah, but when he shares what's going on and it's like, I can't please people that are. Okaying these things. Get, let's just get this process started right away because. Waiting a month, waiting two months, waiting. It's been longer than that because like Derek says, it was. He had got to hand it to him when he got here.
Yeah. No, I agree. How's it going?
I just got out of track practice.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
What do you what's what do you run in track?
Uh, so this is my first year, but I'm gonna be doing hurdles and I'm gonna do a relay. We have a first meet this weekend, so I'm gonna do the. Sixteen meter hurdles and then I think the four by one hundred relay.
Pretty fast, or?
Well, I mean. I always been told in like my sports that I could be a runner.
Yeah.
And I this year, uh, because Coach White, he's an awesome coach and he's just like, can I just get you ready to go in sooner like?
Yeah.
Because a lot of those kids, they are like insane athletes.
So you're a senior this year, right?
Yeah, but I was like, might as well just do it.
Hey, Damian, how's it going, buddy?
Good. How you doing?
Good, man. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna wait for just a couple minutes. We've got a sparse crowd today. Only the dedicated ones have shown up today, right?
It's always exciting to hear track conversations. That was my.
Oh, yeah, Damian was a big track guy.
Uh, like I've worked a lot these past couple weeks, so.
Can you can you go to college? Track scholarship or no?
I don't I don't think so. I mean, I like, as much as I've always been a runner, it's like, a lot of the kids at our school have been like.
Yeah.
They do cross country and swim and summer training, so I'm like, I'm definitely behind them.
Yeah. Have you been more distance running in the past or just?
Just having. Whatever I made, but it's like softball before and volleyball, so like.
They sent somebody plans online. They're sharing some. One, two, three, four.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm online.
I played college baseball with a minor league back in the day, but yeah. I know it's like dedicating your life to sport. That was good.
There was an agenda.
You know what? She did not. Let me know. I can go print it off.
We have to approve the minutes from last.
He has no minutes. You didn't hand him in.
We gave him to Mike. He was supposed to give him to Jackie. We gave him to Mike. He was supposed to give him to Jackie.
Well, then I guess you need to talk to Mike because Jackie asked me yesterday if I had the minutes. Or if I had notes on it. I did go back after she asked me that. I went and watched the video of our meeting last month. And I did take down some notes on that, so. If we missed something, we can go over them.
Uh, yes, we are. We're recording hot mics.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at four twenty. Oh, do you wrote calls? Mike?
Here.
Cherry?
Yeah.
Lila?
Yeah.
I'm here. Terry Ziegler did ask for an excused absence and I know. Sis also asked for excuse absence if we didn't meet this week. And Vicky, but I think she thought it was yesterday. I thought it was yesterday. So she's here.
Do you need a vote on that?
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody wants to make.
I make a motion to excuse Terry and Sis.
Okay, second. So we have a motion by Mike and second by Vicky. Any objections? And then we'll start with our active agenda and it's pool opening decision.
Pearl was supposed to bring in some numbers on the costs and stuff of that according to what was said last month. So do you we know she coming in or she's just late?
Haven't heard from her. I don't know if anybody else heard from Pearl. She never emailed me back when I asked everybody um time and date. So. I guess we'll kind of give her a call and see where where she's.
What 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 was she gonna answer? I forgot.
She was gonna look, correct me if I'm wrong, but she was gonna look at like the different towns when they're the cost, right?
The cost and.
Okay.
Yeah, she's supposed to prepare the cost for pool increase or to take to cancel. And this would include the per person from the time it opens to the last date, including weekends. And she was gonna make a table up on what it's gonna cost us, what we should maybe charge, et cetera.
I mean, one one thing I can do real quick and the interim is grab Cus because if we want to get like a different perspective of what. It took to run the Grandview pool. Let me go grab him. He's usually pretty good at why, so.
Know what these are. I think they were there yesterday, so.
Yeah, because we don't have any anymore either. So it's just us, us.
It's gonna be a fun year. No, it's gonna go good. Yeah, let me check to see. Maybe Pearl did. We haven't checked.
I think we should have, when it comes to pool discussions and stuff, we should talk and see if we can get Mitch Ziegler because he handles the pool.
That's what I heard is they were going to get him.
Pretty stranger. Good, good to you.
So we're gonna put you on the spot here, buddy. So we were supposed to have a presentation.
What do you consider if you're.
Comparing like kind of like pools and and costs, but just. Obviously, you're not gonna have the exact numbers, but sort of sort of like a testament and what you remember. On a bunch of costs around your grand view pool, you know, staffing and just kind of some of those little things.
Put you on the spot.
Not not to put you on the spot, but we're going to put you on the spot.
Trying to. I'm gonna get something real quick.
Yeah.
I I do know, um, Mike had emailed me about it and I wanted to bring it up um also, but. The Grandview or.
Grandview and project.
Um, have already been posting on social media for lifeguards, um, all of that stuff for the pool. So I didn't know if we were on like where we're at with that because I think we should just. Jump on the gun because I know last year was kind of like. It was we we they could.
Chaos.
Chaos. They couldn't find, um.
Last year was it was chaos.
Oh, yeah, they got started late and then, yeah, it was.
To make sure everybody is certified.
So I know the the one thing that we're planning on doing because Mitch is on vacation right now. He's gonna to manage that's that that particular endeavor this year. And Cus and and I and and like his Mitch is kind of part of. Grandview are gonna get together and and maybe do almost like a joint effort in recruiting. So that that's something that'll be a good discussion item right here. But I am aware that we need to get on the ball with this.
So is Mitch gonna be the person in charge of the pool, hiring the staff and maintaining their schedules and making sure everybody's there when they're supposed to be? Is that? What I'm hearing?
That is that is the game plan right now.
Ouch. Good thing you got good employees, Mike.
So are you are you not endorsing Mitch or what? Ouch, ouch can mean a lot of things.
My personal is I think you should hire a seasonal person just to operate the pool. Because your public works people, they have lots of work already on their schedule.
So so we'll talk to our interim public works director. What what do you? So she's not she's not necessarily feeling Mitch as, you know, to manage the pool.
Well, this is um. I'm trying to show this. Yes. I I did talk to Mike this morning about. Bringing in a part-time person to manage the both the community center and the pool. We haven't we haven't quite worked out the particulars yet, but I I I agree with you that we need to have. A person that is dedicated because. With the summer months with the mowing, the watering, breakdowns, emergencies, I I could see a. Situation where we could run into a conflict with. Uh, mention the employees not being able to get free to go address a problem at the pool. So I I've been giving that some thought and and bouncing some ideas off of Mike this morning. Because yesterday. Uh, we met with Mitch and my assistant and I and we're trying to set up a. Schedule as to when the pool needs to be filled, ready, when is the first. Uh, swim practice, when is the lifeguard needing to be available? So so I'm working on that information as well.
Yeah, see, see, Chris knows that that's a lot of responsibility. There's so much to do. And to add that on to any employee that is currently there. That is just overload.
Yeah, and and we're dealing with it, you know. I'll say Mitch has been gracious and is willing to step in there. If necessary, but 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 to add to that, you know, there there are some union issues that we have to move move past, so we. You know, in best case scenario, that that we'll be able to do the part-time person, but. If the union pushes back and says that we're replacing staff with part-time to save money. You know, this this is the nuance, quite frankly, that that we have to deal with, so. It's a it's a dance.
Well, I wouldn't think it would be to save money, Mike, as it would be just to give someone else that responsibility. And to to do that job.
Oh, I'm not. I agree with you wholeheartedly on, you know, those kind of issues, but it becomes like. It just depends, you know, we have to have that conversation with the union. And um, so before like we we overpromise and underdeliver. You know, I I know what we can do for sure and and if it has to be all hands on deck. But yeah, that that would be the game plan because I I don't disagree with you. That's that's a lot for Mitch to handle because he's got other duties. And, uh, you know, hopefully we can get to that point where we can have that part-time person.
That would be great.
Yeah, no, I I totally agree with you.
But we are having that. We are having that discussion, so that's the positive part of it.
And cuz they were talking last our last meeting that they wanted to have the pool open from Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. Just to give you that information there.
Because I I believe the pool usually closes like about the second week of August, so you're you're talking about.
Right, but I'm just telling you what the what the board right there suggested last month when we when we met.
Okay, uh, the. Challenge and and we had that in Grandview. The lifeguards are usually going back to school before that, so lifeguards is gonna be. A challenge to extend another two weeks of pool usage. So that's something that that is going to be a factor.
Right, I understand that, but someone mentioned at our last meeting that the kids don't start college back until September sometime. So why can't we keep it open? That was the.
I'm just I'm just sharing this past experience.
Right.
They they they. They don't. Start school at a certain day, but they want to have a break before they go back to school. They wanted to do some shopping before they go back to school. So there's some other factors and not just that the school starts on a certain day.
Right, I understand that. I just wanted to let you know what was discussed at our last meeting.
Okay. All right. What it costs to operate the pool in in Grandview for twenty twenty-five. We are total expenses were they're estimating at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Uh, we have three quarters of a parks and rec director. We have one. Uh, public works main maintenance technician. We have. Uh, one and a half pool manager, one and a half, uh, I mean, excuse me. Fifteen percent, fifteen percent of the pledge or fifteen percent of an assistant pool manager and then. Two point one lifeguards for a total of two point five seven five FTEs. And. The revenue that we generate up there is about fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
What'd you say your expenses were, Cus?
Uh, they're projecting one hundred and thirty, about hundred forty thousand.
And now the thing I keep hearing is the same size pool, but did it run the number of hours? Or was it?
Uh, it's a smaller pool. Hours, it uh depends on. The swimmers because it was days where there wasn't enough swimmers to. Yeah, keep it open. Uh, it closes. Leave it's the first week of August.
When's it open?
Uh, it opens the, I think with the same as Sunnyside, the the weekend after the last day of school.
Um, suggestion for like hiring lifeguards. I know that you guys posted on social media, but. We do have Lila here, so if there maybe we could like go to the high school during lunchtime and have the applications out and kind of. Give the students the application and say, hey, we're already starting to hire lifeguards. Like, here's the information and answer any questions maybe they have, like, you know, this is what's gonna run. I know when I was HR at M R, a lot of the kids just didn't know how to fill out the information.
What was the recruitment strategy? What has been the recruitment strategy?
I think they just post it online and then go from there.
So the and I'm assuming that most most of the people are high school, college.
I think I will say and I'm a lot of the kids who've been working there have worked there already, so they already had like known the process and they knew who ran it, so they were able to just like be rehired.
Yeah.
So they were already like experienced.
Okay.
Don't we have like a list of.
You assume it's a.
Yes.
Call and say, hey, are you interested?
We yesterday I'd asked IT to. Get into the. Director's manager or manager's phone. They gave me a list and they they did provide me with a list that we were looking at. So we have Victoria is the my assistant. She's been calling some of the some of the folks. So we're we're in the process of doing that now. We just don't want to hire too many because last year there were so many different. There was a lot of people and that's why our numbers were so high too is because our staff was so.
Well, and that's one of the anecdotal things that I've heard is a lot of times we would just. Send a number of lifeguards there that maybe weren't even necessary. And then we had these old cost over ones.
Yeah, the contract, the contract when a swim team calls for. Three lifeguards for eighty or eighty-five swimmers and that is the same. I I think the pool capacity. Is two hundred and fifty. So if you if you do the three for eighty-five, so that'd be. Uh, nine nine lifeguards that you would need.
On duty all the time or just in general?
Three for eighty-five if if.
Okay.
If the pool was full of capacity.
Right.
The two hundred and fifty some you would need nine lifeguards getting available, so. Yeah, because I think I think when we heard last year on lifeguards was that if they didn't make their cert for a lifeguard. Then they got put in to be a cashier. So now you've got, you know. All these, you know, these lifeguards and then you got all these cashiers. Well, they didn't make the cert, but you know, don't feel bad. We're gonna put you as a cashier. And I mean, again, why can't lifeguards do a do role? Lifeguards can do when they're not on. And do the cashier instead of having ten cashiers and fifteen lifeguards. It is. That's why the we're trying to get the cost. Uh, not to break the bank because you got so much to work with, but I think there was a lot of wasted. Management that was not being run good where. The monkeys were running the zoo is how I say it. So. We need to really look at this this year and make sure that we get things in order and not having people taking naps in the.
and not having people taking naps in the lifeguard house, because there is, you know, we've got too many. So, but yeah, I mean, we can do Facebook, we can do that sign that's out there on the highway that we're hiring lifeguards.
Yeah, I think it'd be an easy ask, like, the the question would be the training element, like, if I'm a person that I'm not certified and I wanna, I wanna get certified, how do, how do I do that?
Yeah, we're working with Grandview, Gretchen, because she also has the same situation, needs lifeguards. And we're trying to figure out how many Sunnysides needs, how many Grandview needs, and can we find a, an instructor to do both communities.
See, that's what happened last year, was that she had these people that needed to get cert, and then the pool was down. So they went to the racket club to get cert. But now Toppenish is closed. So maybe we can try to get a hold of somebody over there to see if they have a list that the Toppenish lifeguards, because they're out of a job over there.
Yeah, now my, my gut tells me there's gonna be a lot of lifeguards out there available. Or maybe not, no, well.
I think we have to, they have to be certified by a certified instructor.
That's correct, yeah.
You know, and that's that hundred and eighty dollar fee that they charge. And I'm not sure how long that certificate lasts, if it just lasts for one year, or if it lasts for more than two years.
Yeah, I was wondering that, how long this certification lasts.
Do you guys know if the city's paid for those over the years, the certification? Because that might be an incentive, I mean, that might be worth the investment to, for the city to pay eighty bucks to get you certified. Because I feel like more people would step up.
Question.
If we, uh, go ahead, Damian.
So we have a lot of community pools in the neighborhood where I live, like, there's a lot of literal neighborhood pools that are owned by the membership. And one of the things that we did, because we ran into coming out of COVID, having a shortage of instructors and lifeguards, we ended up working with the swim teams and used it as a fundraiser. So the coaches and the instructors on the swim team would be certified, and it was part of their provision. They have to, well, here, they have to be anyways. And then they were able to use a lot of the connections with the swim team to come down. And when there were hours, we applied for a grant, and we ended up getting a grant to where we could reimburse the swim team, basically. So it brought our costs down by fifty percent on having to pay, because we were able to offset it with grants.
That was, I met with Lexi on Monday. She is the swim coach managers. And that was one of the things that we talked about with some of the swim team participants that are eligible or old enough to be lifeguards. Would they consider being a lifeguard, getting certified to be a lifeguard? And that would reduce the, the need for us to provide lifeguards during swim practice. And, and one of the things that, that we discussed was the stipends, instead of monetary money that maybe the city would provide the season pass to the swimmers that would get certified and participate as a lifeguard. So I think the swimmers pass, I, I, I'm not sure what that costs, but it's, it's fairly inexpensive. So they just get a free swim, because each, each swim team member has to pay for a season pass to be on the swim team. So then we would just make that as an example, and it'd be a minimal cost. And they would say to somebody, so we, we've given some of that, some discussion as well.
So do you think, I mean, we need lifeguards, because if we don't have lifeguards, we can't go. So do you think that's something that we can start pushing out on our social media?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then what would it take to get a banner, a banner made and put on the fence at the pool that where cities looking for lifeguards or come apply for lifeguards? Get that posted so people can see. Because sometimes people do look at social media, but then sometimes people don't. And so maybe we can get a sign posted out on that fence that, you know, we're taking applications for lifeguards.
Yeah, and we can.
Or maybe instead of putting a banner up there at the pool, put it on our bulletin as we're coming into town.
Well, that's what I would mention to them, yeah, that too, plus social media, plus a banner. Or is this something that, you know, that they can see around town when they drive by, that, oh, there's a sign, what's it say?
Can we use the fire department sign, you know, that?
Oh, yeah. I know, maybe like, we can get it on the announcements at the school, like, hey, hiring lifeguards. You know, go to the city, or maybe have some applications in the counseling office, pick up an application here at the counseling office. Just so then, you know, because kids have sports and right now, so it's easier for them just to hop in to the counseling, grab it and fill it out. And then maybe some people just don't have the eighty dollars to pay for that.
A hundred and eighty dollars.
It's a hundred and eighty?
A hundred and eighty, one eight zero.
Brianna, Brianna, she's kind of the, I think she was our trainer, have you heard of Brianna?
We, we tried to call that number, but it, it goes to a different, it doesn't go to.
Okay, gotcha. So she needs to change her number.
So, I mean, so we've discussed about lifeguards, so we can try to get things rolling as soon as possible. Because I say Procter and Graham is already, they've already pushed out their stuff out on social media. And we haven't, haven't, you know, we haven't done anything yet, because we're still getting things put together. What about the, those parts and stuff of the pool? And do you know if they got ordered?
Yes, I think Mitch placed the order, because there was sixteen of the plastic. I guess better term, they look like a radiator that goes into the manifold, the filtration system. So I think they, they bought the thirty two, they bought the, the covers that go on them. He bought the coronation equipment, so all that is, is.
So all that is on order?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think he said it was, part of it is already arrived, so it's, it'll, that part be ready.
And I know last year, they had some outfit out of Yakub, that something was wrong with the boiler. Do you know if that's fully operational and running, or is it issues?
Is that the one thing that Rotary was gonna buy?
No.
Rotary, Rotary would find.
The filtration system.
Yeah, the, the voyer.
I think he said that, that was a pump, a motor that, that went out and they replaced that.
So the boiler should be, so that'd be okay. Because last year, it was one of those kids were freezing the water, and they couldn't turn the boiler on, because.
I think the motor was out.
Okay, so long as that's fixed. I just wanna be, I don't wanna have any delays, because last year was such a letdown with the school kids. And everybody.
So last year, there was a delay.
Well, yeah, because the pump went out.
Oh, the pump went out, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And we watched.
My son was not happy, because he's like, you need to read that, read all those books.
There was a lot of revenue there from the school district that pays, and we didn't get none of that.
Because you think it's Pioneer, C K, Washington, and Outlook, that's all.
Oh, we were, there was.
And the fire department came through and they they split themselves and they turned on the water, so then, like, you know, the whole scene, so then the kids got to go get wet that way. But I know a lot, that's what they look forward to, and the teachers are like, meet your A R goal, or, you know, be good behavior, you get to go to the pool. So, yeah, I know a lot of kids were not, they're really bummed. And some kids don't get the opportunity to go. So them going through the school, you know, that's something they're looking for. So I'm hoping we can get it going, so that way the kids can get to the pool.
And maybe with, I wanted to open on time, I don't want, I don't want any.
Yeah, you don't want them. Maybe with anything.
I have a question. Sorry, Mike, I have a question when you get done.
No, go ahead.
I just wanna know, who's gonna do the advertising? Who's gonna see about getting a banner or putting it on the city board? Or, or this fire department board? Who's gonna do that?
That, I'll work with Jacqueline Renteria on that, and then we'll, we'll get that messaging out.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, maybe with anything that we do with banners or something, that we can put the Q R code.
Yeah.
So then they can just scan it, and then they can do it online. Because you're gonna get all these people coming in and out of the offices to get an application, when they can just do it online.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to obviously create an application or something.
For a flyer.
There's gotta be files from last year that you guys can go back and take a look and see. I would hope that there was some files that, how the system was put in place and stuff.
Well, we do have, we, I said, my assistant and Lisa who work at the community center pool.
Yeah.
To just bring all that information, because we're gonna have another meeting tomorrow with Mitch, myself, Lisa and Victoria, to get some dates together. As to when the pool's gonna be filled, when trying to figure out when the lifeguards would be using it for certifying the first day of pool, June second. Swim, swim practice, swim practice is June second. So we're, we're getting all the dates as to when it needs to be started, so we can work backwards to know when we need to be in operation.
So the, the community here would like to see those, it can be open on Memorial and close on Labor. That's what we're hoping that that may look.
Well, if, yeah, if, if we're filling the fourteenth, fourteenth of May.
Yeah.
Uh, it would be ready for Memorial Weekend.
And I don't know, is there any maintenance in that empty pool that needs to be addressed, like paint or anything?
Well, we haven't, uh.
We haven't really gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get the carton filled over.
Definitely like being thrown right into it, huh? Let's go.
Are we pretty good then with the pool discussion, which is in advance?
For now until, yeah, because they gotta meet and everything, but I think the most important thing is to just even get this advertising going as soon as possible.
Okay, um, the second thing on the agenda is community center. Um, I know I've had like some community members say that they've called Public Works and nobody answers, because they wanna get to use the facility. I don't know, maybe if we can double check. I don't, the number that's on there, or they're calling during lunch, or is there specific hours?
Well, for the record, uh, we just filled that position, um, late last week. So she's got a week and a half into it.
Yeah.
If, if the calls were before that, I would say probably nobody answered, if they're calling that, that office home. But I know that she has been feeling a lot of calls in the last week.
Okay.
So, so I know that there is a communication going on, and she has booked, she has booked a couple parties. We have, uh, some events that are booked, we have the indoor soccer group that's been, that has been talking, and I just talked to Mr. Malorado about potentially basketball, so, so I know that we're, we're taking calls now.
Okay.
But.
And I figured, I know there was like changes and stuff, but I just didn't know, like, maybe.
We didn't have enough, we didn't have enough.
Make sure the phone's working.
Yeah, so I just want my, I would bring it up, see what's going on, let them know, hey, start, you know, try now if you're gonna wanna book it.
But my assistant did share that we need to, um, address the, the webpage for the community center, because it's a little hard to navigate. And, uh, so Mike and I have been talking about that as well. So, um, do we need some improvement? Yes, we do, and we're, we're taking that into consideration.
Since we're talking about the community center out there, they have a splash pad out there. And, um, last year, I had, well, two years ago, I had brought up this idea where Granger city has a button that the kids push, and then the water goes for so long. And then they go back and push the button again, and the water goes so long. So I was hoping last year, we were gonna get this done, but everybody was talking big numbers. And it's like, why big numbers? All we gotta do is put a, a timer or something with a button. And then, because the staff had to go out there and turn the water on, and then it went, came back out and turned the water off. And there's nobody there now. So that means that splash pad is not gonna be in operation.
And I, I don't know how this one works. But I know that when Granger put theirs in, uh, it was plum directly to the domestic line. And that's why they would push a button, it would run, run a certain amount of minutes, and it would go off. I, I don't know if this one is set up on a, where it has a reservoir and the water is where it needs to be chlorinated and, and filtered out, so I, I need to investigate that. So that would be the only difference between the two then.
Yeah, because I said.
Mike, yes?
Yes.
I remember from last year when you brought this up, Mike, that it is on a reservoir, it's recycled water.
Yeah, so that would be a different operation.
Okay, that, because they were talking thousands of dollars to put them on, like, just buy a button and push it, and you're done, you know? So, but like I say, I just don't wanna see that go. And then they said, well, we're not gonna do anything, because they're, they wanna redo the splash pad. The splash pad is operation and it's working. Just get a button or something, so these kids, you know, we don't have to have somebody stand there and turn it off and on, and the kids can enjoy using that splash pad. Because there's a lot of kids out in that area that enjoy walking and, and doing that. So I just don't wanna see that slide by, and we didn't look at it or discuss it.
So we'll look at it, okay.
Anybody, Mike, you have anything else for the community center, or anybody else?
Uh, no, just, uh, I know there's been question marks as to what we're doing with it. I mean, it's still rent, it's still rentable, so, I mean, the community can still rent. You know, call Public Works, if, you know, and I say, if somebody watches this video, if you don't get a hold of Public Works, call the front desk. You can email me. So we live in twenty twenty five, I get frustrated sometimes when people are like, I can't get a hold of anybody. Like, I am on every social media channel. We are on every social media channel. We are, if you can't find me, knock on the door. But I keep my windows open too, so everybody can see that I'm here. Knock on my window at City Hall.
Just don't throw a rock.
Yeah, so. You can find Mike G, I, you can find me. My cell is five oh nine eight five zero four seven four eight. I text it all hours. That's my personal one, my, my professional one is five oh nine eight three six ten ninety six. Text me anytime of the day and night. I'm usually, I got my phone right next to me. So I get frustrated when people say they can't find me.
Yeah, I, I'm just relating, I'm just like.
No, I know.
Did you call, like, tell the city?
That's, that's my one trigger spot, you know, when people say they can't go. I'm on LinkedIn all the time too, that's my social, that's my preferred social media channel. So if you're on LinkedIn, you can find me there too.
So do we have items from community members? Violet, do you have anything? No.
No, we just talked about splash pads, I think.
Um, the only thing I have is, um, but the Mrs. Sunnyside's joining the Spirit of Sunnyside Dinner, which is April twenty sixth. Um, I know the city just shared last night, I saw that, it's up there, so if you guys have any nominations, do you guys wanna nominate anybody? Go ahead and submit it there, um.
So there's like, there's all sorts of categories, right?
Yes, there's all sorts of categories, there's like youth, public work, um, legacy, hero. I, I don't know all of them, but, um, there's a lot on there. Um, it's gonna be at the communities.
Good event.
Yeah, at the community center, anybody wants to buy a table, um, you know, to get tickets, it's on there. Or you can get a hold of one of the court members, and they'll get, they'll get you going, or if you wanna make a basket, and we'll, we'll take that too. So, yeah, that's what I have as far as need for staff, and then items from staff members.
Um, the only thing I, I wanted to introduce Damian Davis, because look, as I promised the last. Um, the only thing I, I wanted to introduce Damian Davis cuz look, as I promised the last meeting, um, we, we talked about a soccer master plan and, and the group in here has, has the literature that, that Damian provided us. And we've been talking about this since, since I jumped on board. Obviously soccer is something people love and, and the valley and in particular in Sunnyside, so, um, and we've talked about different scopes. So this is just really the, the first draft of what could be done. Um, I've checked the funding mechanism, so we can use refunding to support a plan because it's part of our, uh, oh gosh, our CIP plan and, and a few other ones are. Yeah, the open, we've got an open space plan, so I, I've vetted that, so, um, you know, a plan like this takes a lot of community outreach and my vision for the board is to really take, you know, take the bull by the horns on this one and be the, the group that really works closely with myself and Damian on this and gets community support. Um, I have been accused of loving soccer and yeah, I do love soccer. I think, I think for the, for Sunnyside, it could be a great thing and I look at the economic opportunities. If we can develop our different fields that are really well maintained. And, uh, you know, my other vision is to, if somehow we can convert that, the old skating rink into an indoor soccer facility that's next to the high school. If we can have indoor soccer there and that, that thing, I truly believe that building can serve as a multipurpose building for, you know, I don't know.
Wrestling.
Rest, I mean, you, you name it. I mean, we could probably attract different kind of functions to that. So that, so ultimately Damian and I have talked about, if we can put together a good plan, um, there's opportunities and Cus can chime in here a little bit, where you could take plans to the voters and say, look, put your money where your mouth is. Here's the plan, you know, support a bond measure to support this and, and, you know, th- this can bring great economic opportunities. So, uh, with that being said, I'll, I'll toss it over to you, Damian, and, and we, we've got, we've got your literature in front of us and.
Perfect. Yeah, so, uh, like, like Mike said, my name's Damian Davis. A little bit about me, so, uh, I ran track, played sports all through college, a little bit professionally. Um, I have since gone into, you know, small business work. I now help do economic development with different municipalities, um, as well as doing small business startup. Um, lots of different angles on this. Uh, one thing I will tell you that is the great unifier uh, across economy, across tourism, across a lot of different things, is sport brings all of the above to an area. Um, whether it be Pasco, the Sozo in, in Yakima, um, on those big sports weekends, you see a huge influx of people spending dollars locally. You see a huge influx of um, community members coming out to support those events. And I think that with a lot of the open spaces that are available in Sunnyside, that soccer, moving things over to a little bit more soccer-specific function doesn't detract from any of the other functions. I can still go on because in the end of the day, a soccer field is one of the best return on investments for the infrastructure needs. Um, so on that proposal there was, was kind of a laser-focused projection that was going towards a grant specifically. Um, but I think overarching, there's real opportunity to engage with the community and kind of coalesce some support and try and grab some momentum, um, for a lot of the things that wanna be done there. There's been discussion on different kinds of athletic endeavors. Um, and the one thing I can say is almost every single one of them you can do on a soccer field. Um, when I came over there and drove around with Mike and the gentleman from the, the club sport, it became readily apparent that there's a choke point in the community for getting activation space for these kids and a lot of that has to do with the fields. So being able to spread those not just on school district fields, but be able to put them into community spaces, I think would be, um, a huge addition to the community. And when you're talking about attracting investors to the area, which is also something that Mike and I spoke about, having those kinds of amenities really makes the town more attractive for private development. Um, and so having this public-private partnership, um, I think could be a, a strong move in positioning Sunnyside in the, the Yakima Valley.
Exactly. So, uh, what I, what I'd like you to do, Damian, if you don't mind, is, is kind of go through some of the literature here that, that you put together. I know, I know this is a preliminary plan that we've talked about, um, but I mean, ultimately there's, there's flexibility in this. I mean, I've talked about expanding the scope and, you know, not, one of, one of the ideas coming out of this is, is reshaping Tina North Park and really making that kind of a centerpiece. Uh, because you've got the space, you can have some parking, you can kind of massage the field. And it's in such a strategic spot, close to downtown, you know, close to Yakima Valley Highway, where we hope, you know, a lot of development's gonna happen out in outlook and in the months in property. So I, and I love the fact, you know, to Damian's point, if we can develop that park strategically, we'll get people frequenting downtown restaurants and, you know, that sort of thing. But I also think there's opportunity if we can develop like Sunny View Park into like really nice fields and cuz you've got plenty of parking, plenty of field space out there where in best case scenario, let's say we, we bring a tournament from out of town, we're gonna have multiple fields running, you know, people coming in from all across the state and all across the region and, and, uh, you know, frequenting the hotels, you know, and, and, and the residuals too are great for Grandview, great for Prosser, great for us, great, you know, Granger. Cuz, you know, I think all the, the economics are gonna be positive for everybody. So with that being said, I'll, I'll tee it back up to you, Damian.
Yeah, you know, the economics of it kind of makes sense. You, you start looking at it and there's some basic benefits. You have the tourism, the visitor spending of dollars in your community. All that supports the businesses. So really what you see is you see a ring of, um, economic influx when you have events, but even not just events. Just think about all the different youth programs and the youth that come in and use it that are local. And when they're done, they go grab ice cream. They go over and they get stuff from, from different food venues. Uh, and the, the Tina Coth Park specifically, you know, you have all that infrastructure around it already and it's just sitting there kind of underutilized. But you can go into, all of that creates job creation, increased property values, um, it attracts investments. You know, the social and community benefits run pretty deep as well. There's the enhanced quality of life, youth development of sports programs, again, giving youth something to do when they're not in school. Um, there's been countless studies to show the impacts of keeping kids engaged during those downtimes and keeping them out of trouble at the same time. Um, you know, and being a rural community where you guys are, it, it, there's less things to do than in some of the other areas around there. And for those kids who don't have the same socioeconomic availability to go travel to those things, it gives them another outlet, similar to the conversation you guys have about your public pool. Um, it's just one of those things that it makes a ton of sense for a, a town the size that you guys are. Um, there's the health and wellness benefit sides, environmental and sustainability benefits, you know, green space provide aesthetic value. And when you're talking about trying to get people to build tracks of houses in certain areas, um, being able to have those built-in amenities that they can also promote and then a lot of times reinvest back into, um, really does help build that private part, uh, private-public partnership that we've been talking about. Um, when you're talking about funding for these kinds of things, um, there's a ton of grant opportunity right now at the state level, but also through different organizations regionally, specifically around, um, you know, health and wellness benefits. Um, there's some infrastructure grant dollars that are out there. Um, so these kinds of programs kind of help write themselves for some of those funding opportunities. Um, specifically within the state of Washington, there's a big push right now because the World Cup is coming to LA, the West Coast in very short order. And so a lot of those professional leagues have been doing a lot of miniature outbreaks and outreach programs, you know, and Sunnyside is one of those places. There's not a lot that happens on the east side of the state when it comes to a lot of those professional sport interactions. But I know that is a targeted effort right now with the pro soccer program, both men and women's, to try to get more onto the east side of the state. Um, the east side of the state has a lot going for it when it comes to weather for sporting activities, specifically soccer. We don't have the same rain issues that you get a lot on the west side. Um, there's, there's, um, you know, cheaper housing, cheaper accommodations over here than you get if you go to a tournament in Seattle. Uh, for example, I was over in Woodenville with another client, um, doing some, some wine work and they had a soccer, uh, invitational and I could not book a hotel room anywhere around Woodenville. I had to drive all the way south of Tacoma to find a hotel to stay in. Um, because everything was booked up. Now that's a larger one. That was a, a national one. But being able to do these kinds of things have direct economic impacts. The city of Pasco, for instance, did a four-day tournament where the estimated economic impact to the community was over a million dollars for a three-day tournament. Um, those kinds of things, I think, putting in front of the, the population in a way that makes it not only attractive to those who are interested in sports and have children who are gonna participate directly, but then also being able to talk about the economic benefits and the job creation benefits of projects like these, I think, um, kind of speaks to what people are interested in right now, um, in Eastern Washington in general.
Sounds good. Um, in, in terms of, uh, outreach and, and kind of community engagement, can you talk about like what, what is the, what would be your game plan to work with the city and, and to work with the Parks Board on something like this?
Yeah, so it'd be, it would be a full-court press when you're talking about doing town halls, um, being able to get in front of people and get their direct feedback. You can do this at existing events. These are great things for the fair area. Um, back-to-school time is also another really popular time to be able to do some canvassing. But being able to get input, so not only are we planning on doing something in the community, but we're also shaping it, gathering critical feedback from people in the community and trying to address a, any fears that may be there, but also trying to promote what those benefits of having something like that are. So you do that by hosting these town halls, hosting small breakout sessions, you know, meet the mayor, uh, lots of. Yeah.
Go ahead, Damian, forget it.
Okay, yeah, so you know, i- i- it, there's gonna be the, you know, social media outreach, the news outreach, being able to do direct mailers. Um, so people are aware of when these things are, hosting things at existing events, but then also hosting during opportunities when there's, um, free access, you know, picking the days where there's not as much work to be done, picking times of the year where you have a little bit more downtime. But having these community town halls, it allows me to kind of gather that critical feedback, put up kind of a, a word map and try and see what are the common areas that you're hearing repeatedly. Be able to try to address any concerns, but then also highlight any of the positives that people are excited about, um, at the same time. I would take all that information, be able to condense it down into like a usable report that you, I could report A to you guys, but that you can then use to kind of generate what the programming and generate what that official ask is gonna be to the community with, um, with, with data. Um, it's not just people sitting on hire, sitting at a desk and coming up with an idea and placing it upon the community, but it's actively gathering feedback, addressing concerns, understanding that the economy is tight right now, but also understanding that bang for your buck, this is a, a really big win for the city of Sunnyside potentially. Um, and being able to have all that information so that when we do go out, you're not running into the same thing that kind of happened with a lot of communities this last election cycle where they were trying to float education bond me- measures and in several areas that was not popular. Um, a lot of that came with, people were not really aware of what those bond measures were funding. And I think at the end of the day, a lot of people, most people wanna be there to support the community and the children in the community, whether that be education, um, sports or facilities help keep them safe, healthy and happy. Um, and so what I propose is again, three-phase kind of approach, do the social media outreach, do the direct mailers, do the, um, town halls and the symposiums and then be able to come back and have a informed stance with data directly gathered from those, uh, community engagements. That way, nobody kind of sees a bond measure as a surprise. They're looking forward to the opportunity rather than it being something that's placed on them.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's gonna be kind of the nuances. It's, that, that's where the engagement part, I think, is important, to kind of gauge what they want and, you know, is, you know, how much will the community support that? Cuz the, the issue, I think it, it goes back to how, how can the city make this happen? If, if the stakeholders aren't willing to support it, but it also it's kind of one of those things where I'm willing to investigate it and put the work in because everything that we've been told as a city and as a city council is we want soccer, we want soccer, we want soccer. And, and help us to, you know, help us make that come to fruition. But in my opinion, I think there's going to have to be some economic benefit that we can show to the community that like, hey, this is gonna be good for us economically as well as, you know, physically for the kids and then, you know, for their, their everyday, you know, health and wellness and then giving them an opportunity to participate. So let me open it up to the, to the floor here, uh, Damian, and see if any board members want, have any questions for you.
Sure.
Mike, I know you got a question. Come on.
I need to go over this first. We just got this today, so I need to kind of go over and take a look at it.
Yeah, and I can come back or come in person and, and present as well. Um, I think that one of the, one of the biggest benefits of having a really strong public outreach section of this is again, education. So they understand because almost everybody feels like, oh, it's the city. The city is, you know, has all this money. They have all this stuff and they don't really understand, you know, the nature of how cities work and necessarily where all their tax dollars go. Um, but being able to kind of come to them on their terms and be able to have those in-person, face-to-face conversations dispels a lot of the, you know, the misinformation that can kind of come up around these kinds of things.
Absolutely. Well, thanks, Damian. I appreciate it and, and we'll keep in touch. I know we've been talking for a while and, and I'm excited to eventually get something going and, you know, really have the Parks Board be the purveyors of this and, and, uh, you know, carry, carry the heavy lift and, and I think this is an awesome project for the, the park, the Parks and Rec Board to spearhead.
Well, I'm excited for it, especially with the added side of, you know, the potential for an indoor-outdoor facility for, for the community as well. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of things around sports that kind of get lost. Um, and I, and I can tell you, somebody who didn't come from the best of circumstances, sports is what got me into college and kept me from doing bad things and, and a lot of instances because it kept me, kept me busy. Um, and so I know I went from a big town to a small town and that was my biggest thing is what do I do with all this time? And sports was kind of there to help fill it in, so hopefully we can help bring some of that stuff to you guys' community.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot. Appreciate you and, uh, we'll see you soon.
All right.
Thank you, Damian.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any future agenda items?
Yes, you forgot to ask me if I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a comment?
Uh-huh, like the email, you asked me what day I wanted and then you never responded back on when it was.
For, for what?
All right, um, at city council on the third, you had, uh, Alfonso Reyes, a councilman from Granger come in and talk about surf soccer. But he never really did say how much it costs per team or how much it would cost the city or, or anything like that, other than, you know, it's nonprofit and, and, you know, the sponsorships, you know.
Yeah, Sherry, he snuck it in like really quickly. He guesstimated it would be ninety-five dollars per.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
Yeah, so and, and the way, the way he sort of, I don't wanna say justify, but it, the, the thinking, I guess the, the program runs like ten weeks. So like if you divide, obviously if you do the math, it's like nine or ten bucks.
Yeah, he said nine weeks program, eighteen sessions, about five dollars per kid.
Right, so, so they kind of justify and break it out that way. Um, and he, the, what they asked from the city was to utilize the fields. Obviously, we're gonna cut the grass anyway. Um, they can take care of the striping and things like that. Um, so the only ask that he really had from us as a city was can we use the fields? And the council was supportive of that, so I, I said yes. Um, and the way we're, we're kind of looking at it this year is no matter what, even if we have a small turnout, it's, it's the first year of the program. Um, he's also, they, they actively also solicit donations to offset the costs. So the, the cost, you know, the final cost for the kids is probably gonna be less than ninety-five bucks. Um, that just depends how many donations you can get, you know, we can, so that, that still is up in the air.
So he, they're definitely coming in to play soccer here in Sunnyside then?
Yes, they are. The only thing I'm waiting on, Sherry, is he's talking to like the regional office and then they have to get everything squared away on their side before they come back to us with, okay, we're ready to go. And at that point, that, they just give us the go-ahead. We start putting it on our social. that they just give us the go-ahead, we start putting it on our social media platforms and and, you know, and and it's like City of Sunnyside and Surf Soccer bring you use soccer for the spring or whatever, however we message that. So I don't I don't know how successful or unsuccessful it will be, but we're gonna give it a shot and um.
Do you have any idea on how that's going to affect the two local uh, groups are are currently here in town?
They they do not utilize our fields as far as I know. They they use primarily the the elementary schools, if I'm correct. I mean, it's, yeah, use Pioneer and
Dunn Valley.
Right, so they don't they don't necessarily use our stuff for for soccer games, not officially, so.
But is it, sorry, is it soccer? Are they train, is it for training or is it actually the club to play?
It's not me, training is what I got out of it.
Yeah, he kept saying training, so but he also, I talked to him the other day, he did say there's games involved too. So.
Cause that's like a different, cause that's a club or not, oh, they have teams and then that's more expensive. And then you have these little like clinics, I'm guessing he's wanting to host, which you have uh, I think it's the Mid Valley, they do clinics for free and they get donations and they are involved with.
So so my take was it's training and games. So, cause I kept asking, is is there games too? And he assures me there is games involved in in this.
Cause it, cause it sounded to me like it was a training and the top uh, participants would then be eligible to get on a team to go play. Not every, it wasn't a league, it was a playing participant, yes, that that make up a team to go play. Cause I know my when my daughter was younger, she she had invited something like that at ten Moses Lake and we had to try to Moses Lake. And it was
I know, and and it well, his presentation was a little bit confusing, but um because I did ask him the other day, okay, there's going to be games, right? There's so my understanding, unless I have it completely wrong, is it's it's sort of a combination of training and games with who's ever training out there so they can get some real time. Um, but I mean, I I can have him, why why don't we put that as an agenda item the next time we're on?
Okay.
Um.
Cause my understanding from listening to him was that this is an organization that's wh- within the United States. And he's brought to Granger. And that he said that signing up for kids is similar to signing up for school activities. Paperwork has to be filled out. And then also the price point ninety-five dollars per team is my my kind of understanding of it. That would last approximately nine weeks, eighteen sessions, coming out to approximately five dollars per kid.
Yeah, and that that was my perception was you could have a team in there that's training and and going over different. Let me see if I can get Alfredo on the line real quick. I'd just like to call the source. See, what's today? Hey, Alfredo, Mike Gonzalez, how's it going, buddy? Good, hey, you do you have a quick minute to to talk to the Port Park and Recs Board? We're talking about, um, the the presentation that you gave at the council meeting and we just wanted to clarify a few questions. I got you on speakerphone and and the board's here. Do you mi- do you mind answering some questions real quick?
I'm actually middle coaching a game here for high school.
Oh, are you? No kidding. Well, look at you entering the phone. Hey, I just got one question for you while I got you. So 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 what, there's confusion about if we start start this endeavor in in Sunnyside, are there games or is it just training? Are there or is it both?
So every every, uh, so for example, if you do the the park recreation of we'll do training, we'll do games, uh, training games there, so be like two running two locations at the same time. On the other side, uh, it would be more, uh, it would be, uh, Granger and Sunnyside hosting games, right?
Got you.
And seven, seven, eleven, eleven. Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna helpful if we're talking about season couples, once we start throwing uh, century tournaments, you know, clubs start coming in.
Yeah.
So helpful to make sure that they have hotels, they don't have restaurants, so, uh, but, you know, with these uh, century tournaments, we need to be able to host, you know, clubs and etcetera, so it's it's gonna benefit both.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll let you go and and uh and to your game. I appreciate you answering.
Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot, buddy. Have a good one. Talk to you soon. Yeah, so that that's, you know, I that reconfirms what he told me. So it's it's a combination of games and, you know, practicing and games. Uh, how how that's gonna look, I don't ultimately know, so it sounds like you can inject your team in there and
Yes, I'm looking at their website and it says Wednesday's training from five thirty to six thirty, nine weeks, starting in March through May. And then it says Saturday games from nine to one. Um, and then he says depend, time depends on birth year, nine weeks from March twenty-second to May seventeen. Training sessions and games will be grouped by birth. And then it just says, um, ninety-five dollars plus bait transaction fee.
Right, so that that was kind of, that's the same thing you told me, which is good. Um.
And where did you find that, Amy?
Um, I just went on Facebook and and I clicked the surf. It's Washington Eastern Surf SC River Valley. And then I just, there's a thing where, um, a post where it says register here, so I just clicked that.
Good job.
Okay, can you send me that if you if you get a copy? Thank you. Um. So so nothing else, you know, the thing I like about surf is they're super organized, they have a system in place, they have a a real system for signups and and that was the problem that we had. We we didn't have a mechanism in place and then Adrian was willing to do it, Adrian not see us, but he didn't have a real mechanism in place to, you know, collect the fees, you know, get the coaches. Then there's also the insurance part of it. Um, which surf has has all those those layers in place, so.
Yeah, well, Adrian's a coach. He's not, you know, the league representative of, you know, kind of is, you know, but he's just good-hearted, trying to get kids out there to play and have a place for them to play, you know, so he's not organized like this.
He was going to step up, but it was you know, he's managing a lot of kids, so, um, but this was this was and, um, Alfredo approached us, so that that was a great thing. So he approached us for a partnership and I was like, yeah, absolutely, let's let's make it happen.
Right.
Okay, um, so let's set a time and date for our next meeting, which would be?
Can we do the first Thursday of the month?
That's spring break week, I don't know, is everybody here?
What's that, April?
It'd be April third.
April third. And I know, I mean, I'll be out of town because I'm I'm actually headed to Seattle to see my daughter. Um. Maybe it's like a week after. That would be better for me. If if you guys can do April tenth, that's a
That's a Thursday.
Do you, would you guys rather do Wednesday or Thursday?
If Wednesday just.
Tuesday's fine. Or you, Wednesday.
Just for right now, we can, just if we can, just because it's that week is state for wrestling and we do have to do weigh-ins on Thursday, so that's why everybody's waiting till I get done here, so I can go wait, wait anybody?
Yeah.
So if we can for that week, do it on the Wednesday if.
April ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can go back to Thursday.
Are you gonna have another advisory business meeting on the ninth?
On the ninth, yes, there is one. That's and it's a recurring meeting.
Right, okay. So we're gonna do Parks and Rec on the ninth at four fifteen?
Yeah, is does that time work for everybody? I mean, you you need it at four fifteen, right?
It's, yeah.
I I do because I have, uh, people in the building at Sen- at the senior center from one to four.
Yeah, four fifteen works for me to just.
Yeah, no, that's good, that that works.
Traffic school. My, this, my, this is very, you know, it's like, yeah. It's not fun. So, okay, so anything else?
I have two more in the line.
Okay.
All right.
Say hi.
Are we getting the fields out there at South at the
The Ripken?
Yeah, we're working on it. And then the next thing is, is there any, I mean, I know you're here, but I know there's times that you can't be at our meetings, but like if Mitch is capable of coming, because if we have questions, is he will he be the person to talk to or would it be better just to talk to you and then you go from there?
Well, I can, uh, chat with Mitch and and I can see if he could attend that and if he can, and that would relate to us.
Yeah, because last, when in the past, we've had somebody from here of council meetings and then he would take it to the main person. And then go from there. But there's there's sometimes we may have questions and then we have to wait for the following month. And it's just like it gets spread out and spread out, because you know, we're in July.
Well, just questions that you have here, I I plan to get the answers.
Okay.
And and get them to Mike and and then Mike can distribute them out, so I won't make you wait a month.
No, I I appreciate that. Okay.
Um, and this agenda that you're trying to that you put up, can you sign up for the National Board of the committee members I want here?
This uh, this document? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
If that's everything, the meeting is adjourned at five twenty-eight.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Glad you're here.
I'll take it something in the back.
I did, Amy, I did take notes again.
Okay.
I will tomorrow take a minute and give them to Jackie since she didn't get the last ones.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So has it been There's a Is a gentleman that works in the water as Daniel?
He would, I think he would be a good source.
Yeah, maybe a good topic if the day came, if he was capable, you know, if he had
All right.
It would be.
If he clicked leave, definitely.
Cause I'm right here, I'm I think this will, we've been working on it, um kind of teaching the kids like this.
Sure.
Uh, so it
It's like, it seems I ran out of recording, aren't I?
Yeah.
Um.
It's still recording, you can still like.
I think it's still this. I just can't figure out how to stop it.
Oh, you know why? Because I'm not the host, uh, Jackie's the host. I can't stop it. But anyway, people would get pushed in.
I see she answers.
And that's what's been happening.
Are you trying to reach me?
Yes, Jackie, have you stopped the recording?
Okay, I can do that right now. I'm gonna end the meeting. See you guys later. Bye.
Bye, thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome. Bye.
Thanks.
Somebody get their
Yes, you're welcome. Bye.